Good morning, everyone. It is now nine o'clock, and I would ask that you please stand for the invocation to be given by Don Ash, who's the Director with our Emergency Management Department, and then please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good morning. Let us pray. Eternal Father God-Lord, we thank you for another opportunity, another rise, another sun, God. We ask you right now to bless this commission meeting, God. Bless this community and the work that goes forth in this community. Lord, we ask you to be with all elected officials, all our leaders, our managers, and all that endeavor to do the will of the people of Henry County. Lord, we ask you to remember the Bowman family, God. Reed Bowman, who worked in this community. Lord, we ask you to remember the Lemon family, God. J.W. Lemon, who was faithful in this community, God. Thank you for men that were dedicated to the growth of Henry County. Lord, we ask you to bless us in this meeting and all we do, in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This meeting of the Board of Commissioners is now called to order. Are there any changes or revisions to the agenda? Here in non, the floor is now open for a motion to accept the agendas published.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussions? All in favor? Any opposed? Unanimous approval of the agenda. Well, now, I ask Ms. Melissa Robinson to please come forward regarding the Proclamation for Breast Cancer Awareness
Good morning, Chair, Board members.
Good morning.
This morning, we have a proclamation recognizing the month of October as Breast Cancer Awareness Month, whereas every year, too many Americans are touched by the pain and hardship caused by breast cancer. And whereas breast cancer is the second-most form of cancer found in women in the United States and is the leading cause of cancer death for women, with one in eight women diagnosed with breast cancer in their lifetime. And whereas more than 2,500 men will likely be diagnosed with some form of breast cancer in 2018, but thanks to early detection and improved treatment options, death from breast cancer has decreased significantly in the last decade. And whereas many people have endured the heartbreak of losing someone to breast cancer, and it's the memories of those loved ones that drive us to find a cure. And whereas all women are encouraged to talk to their healthcare providers about mammograms and other methods of early detection, as well as their risk of developing breast cancer, and what can be done to reduce that risk. And whereas during the month of October, we remember those lost to this terrible disease and stand strong for those currently facing a breast cancer diagnosis, and we strengthen our resolve to do our part in supporting those affected. And whereas by raising awareness of breast cancer and supporting research, prevention, and early detection, we will move closer to eradicating this disease. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Henry County Board of Commissioners that October is designated as Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and we urge all Henry County residents to spread awareness of this disease, provide support for those affected, and educate others on its prevention and early detection. The second day of October 2018, signed by Chair June Wood, witnessed by Stephanie Braun. And we also, I also want to make a note that Piedmont Henry does a Real Men Wear Pink campaign, and one of our Henry County family was chosen for that honor this year. Dante Gibbs, our Planning and Economic Development Director, was chosen. He's here with us today, and we have several people in the audience wearing pink. And we also have somebody else from Georgia Power, who is also in the campaign.
Great. Let me just make a couple of comments, and I'll invite anyone else from the board to also make comments. But first of all, we just want to say thank you to all of you who are recognizing this month as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. These ribbons, again, are to remind us to definitely honor those who've been impacted by, but to also encourage all of us, especially women, to go get checked and early detection. And men, if you have pink, we commend you as well today to the loved ones, the females in your family, to get checked. But again, it's impacting men as well. I just want to encourage all of us. I had a dear friend who recently, she usually goes and get her annual exam every year, but for one year, she got busy, forgot to go. And fortunately, someone reminded her during the month of October, did you go and get your exam? And she says, "I missed it last time, but I'm going now." And interestingly, she was diagnosed with breast cancer. But the great thing is, is that it was called early enough so that she was able to get the treatments. She's doing well. But it was a great reminder to all of us. I know we've got a lot of things on our minds and our hearts, but we definitely need to take care of ourselves, and I will definitely support Dante and all the other men that are worn pink and those in the past, and just encourage us, again, to encourage our loved ones to get checked for early detection. So we appreciate that. Are there any other comments from the board?
All.
Okay. So we are going to take a picture. There's a group here, so if we could join for the picture, that would be great, Lord.
And if you're wearing pink and you're inclined to come up and take a picture, please do so.
Okay. Thank you all. We're now move into our next agenda item, which is a financial update from Mr. David Smith, who's our Director of Financial Services. So, good morning, Mr. Smith.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, members of the board, and the Henry County community. What I have, I'm going to present to you is the August financial report, and it's basically for review, and if you have any questions of me. I want to remind everyone that we're only two months into our year, where we should be expending about 16% of our expenditures. We have yet to receive our property tax revenue, which is the largest percentage of our revenues. So our revenues are definitely not going to be at that 16% rate. So I wanted to point out some key things that are going on in our financials. Licenses and permits currently are accounting for 13% of our revenues. Right now, we're receiving a lot of revenue, which is an increase for us right now from the telephone commissions at the jails. And the largest expenditure that we have is transfers out of debt service to pay for some of the lease agreements that we have. We do that early on throughout the year. The next slide represents a more detailed picture of the revenues and expenditures. And the key numbers to look at here are total revenue number of 8.3 million and the total expenditure number of 24.8 million, showing that we're utilizing right now a majority of our cash for fund balance of 16.4 million. But it's typical or standard for this time of year, no cause for alarm. The next slide shows where we stand in terms of revenues and expenditures against our budget. We're building up toward those amounts. For this presentation, I wanted to include a picture of our fund balance, just so you can see what we're utilizing thus far. And as a reminder, we have not yet closed out the year of June 30th, so the beginning fund balance number that you see there is truly an estimate, but the revenues and expenditures for the month of August and the impact that it has gives you some idea of where we may be. What's critical on this slide is the reminder that we have 25% restriction for our fund You can't see this slide as much in detail, but it basically represents where we stand for our SPOLS four, revenue and expenditure. You'll see a better picture on the next slide, which is a more graphical representation. I think I did pass out, or not yet, the presentation in paper format, so you should have that, where you can read the detail. But how we're trending right now, you'll see our revenue, we're slightly above where we projected to be in terms of the budget, and our expenditures are slightly under. That concludes my presentation. What questions may you have?
Well, thank you for the presentation. Are there any questions from the board? Okay. Well, I just want to commend the fact that we are getting the financial report and thankful that we're going to begin to see that on a regular basis, so that as we continue to move forward, we'll be able to understand where our revenues and expenses fall. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Okay. We're now moving to our next item, which is a departmental update by our Deputy County
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Thanks for having us this morning. As you mentioned, our reporting mechanism to the board of giving updates has been lacking, and we want to bring that back. And today, we're starting our departmental updates on a quarterly basis. This represents the first six months, and we're doing Public Safety Tech Services and Fleet today, and followed up by next month will be a different cluster coming in to give you quarterly updates on that particular cluster. So today, our goal today is to implement a consistent process of departmental updates to the board. Present quarterly updates by cluster moving forward. Today's update covers the first two quarters. We do, yesterday ended our, or Sunday ended our third quarter, so we have additional updates coming. And answering any questions from the board, we do have the department reps from each one of our departments today here with us. We'll start with Police Services. If you see our Police Services for the first six months, there were dispatched 38,928 calls. Out of them, 37,049 were self-initiated. A total of calls of 75,977. Issued 11,828 citations, 3,452 warnings. We actually worked 4,599 traffic accidents. And of the incidents that we're responding to, the type of incidents in our community, we had 46 robberies, 106 aggravated assaults, had burglary calls, 62 commercial, 213 residential, 329 drug incidents, 668 domestic, 253 DUI arrests, 689 forgery, theft of motor vehicles, 476, two homicides, 887 larceny case, 19 rapes, and 220 stolen vehicles. Just a few pictures of the PD and their citations for the month, or for the quarter. Our Animal Control, Animal Care and Control Department, we started off with 101 shelter, in the shelter in January. Total intake is 1,413. We had 770 of them came from the public, 621 by animal control officers, and 22 by owners. Had 197 adoptions, 236 reclaimed, 544 utilizations, and our ending shelter as of June 30th was 150, and it fluctuates every day on how many animals we have in our shelter. The Animal Control Officers and their DDoPs responded to 1,764 calls. They issued 405 warnings, 208 citations, had court fines equaling $24,093. We had 105 dog bites, or I'm sorry, bite cases, 98 dogs, seven cats, and we had over 3,301 visits to the shelter in the first six months of this year. Which is pretty amazing, how much traffic comes through there. And a few pics of our team there and some of our adoptions. Our Fire EMS Department, total responses in the first six months is 13,968 calls. Had 2,884 fire calls, 10,597 EMS, a total of 10,804 patient contacts, and 7,349 transports to area hospitals. Our Prevention Department did 2,536 existing building inspections, 484 new constructions, and 431 plan reviews in the first six months. 37 structure fires, 11 vehicle fires, and nine other significant fires out of that response A few pictures from our Fire Services. Our EMA 911, the first six months, they received 73,857 911 calls, 114,867 administrative calls, and dispatched 79,830 something, I left that off there, dispatched from dispatch center calls. That's a lot of calls for our dispatch center. They're in the process of continuing implementation of our new radio system. Committee's designed to see what little, small areas of pockets we have some coverage issues in, and working hard to get that worked out with our consultant and our supplier. We're also looking at putting some mini repeaters in areas that have less coverage. So our goal is to have coverage that when you pick up your radio wherever you are, is to make sure you can contact dispatch for our Public Safety team. Working on Tyler and New World, implementation of our new CAD system with our IT department, which would be a tremendous benefit to all of public safety. Our EMA is closing out Irma damages, damages we've received here in the county from Hurricane Irma. We're getting our checks back and make sure we're closing out our claims from that hurricane event. Also worked with the Health Department on a full-scale disaster drill on October 11th of the next few weeks. And we also completed the FEMA course in MSburg, Maryland. We took a team of 60-plus up there and worked on how to coordinate or control and recover from a coordinated attack or multi-discipline incidents. A few pictures of our team members there. And moving to our Fleet Services. Our Fleet Services, they stay busy every day with the vehicles we have, and I can't say enough of what they do to keep our fleet running. But they've processed 2,155 in the first six months of work orders. They've installed all the new equipment, new equipment on all the vehicles that were purchased in the last 12 months. They're bringing 40 more. As you know, we did 60-plus a few months ago surplus, bringing 40 more surplus vehicles to be approved by the board to go to sale later this month at our next meeting. They also implemented a new safety accident team, completed successful EPD store-mortar permit audit, where they had to audit all the repairs and equipment, all the store-mortar equipment, and that's done by the EPD. And completed state of mission testing on all our vehicles as required, and they've did that in the last six months. Those are a few pictures of our team working over our fleet magnets. Our last one for today is going to be our Information Technology. Our IT department spent over 7,521 man-hours working on 3,895 work orders. They're continuing, continuously diligent, diligent working towards implementation of our Tyler project, go online, the first part in January, be the first section, which we're very excited about, moving up to the standard, new technology implementation of reporting. Also, they repaired the fiber cut that was over at DOT and got them back, moved from our 911 center back over to the DOT headquarters on 2081. And the fiber is almost removed, one switch left that's on back order. When that one switch comes in, we'll be ready to demolish the Phillips Drive building to get that, to get that out of the way and move forward in that location with new projects. That's our report for today. Any questions, comments?
Okay. We've heard the presentation. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Commissioner Clemens?
Brad, I want you to give us an update on Station 8.
Yes, ma'am.
And I'll tell you why I'm bringing that up, because they're doing an awesome job, and these guys take care of the, you know, the safety and the health of our community every day. They work irregular hours. We've had them in temporary shelter for two years now. Their residency requirement, it's already temporary that they're away from home, but do we have to keep them in temporary? So I'm going to urge this board to make a move really quick. I've been really lenient and quiet and kind of waiting around on when are we going to get those guys out of a trailer and put them in a permanent residence. So give us an update on Station 8.
Yes, ma'am. You do. Station 8 was put out for bid, the bids came back, and it came back a little, a little more than expected to get out three base stations placed. Staff is directed the last two weeks ago. They're working now on getting the bids back out, three base station. We expect to come up short. We will be coming to the board for asking for approval. We have finance options or funding options, whether fund balance or through other options in the near future, as soon as we get the process through purchasing procurement. But this should be hitting the streets soon to get the rebids done for that. Our goal, you know, we're looking, once the bids are back, turn around quickly with approval from the board, and you're looking at six-month build time, so.
And just so that the board knows, that we have funds in the budget for Station 8, and we had enough to do a two-bay. Now, we've been building new fire stations all over the county, and all of them have been three-bays, and I just didn't think that we should put these guys in a two-bay and put, I mean, it may or may not be less. Johnny, you know, you're my guy that we talked to about that, but I think that having a three-bay in that area, because the county is growing, is what we probably need to continue to do throughout the county. So they had to put it back out to get a three-bay, so that we're uniformed and making sure that we have. Can you talk a little bit about why we need a three-bay instead of a two-bay and the growth of that side of the county?
On that side of the county, that station, new Station 8, will be a little different design than the other stations. Station 8 has a ladder, and I mean, a ladder, excuse me, a fire truck and an ambulance in it. At that point, in the future, you could see another increase in apparatus there. However, as we grow in our community, the detail is not to build bigger stations, but build more stations. We'll drop from a five-mile, five-mile response radius to a three-mile as we continue to grow into a, to a more urban area, not a suburban. We'll have to go to a mile-and-a-half ratio. So your stations, you don't build your multiple stations, your goal then is to put additional stations for response times, decreasing response times. So a three-bay station there, you know, would help with surplus equipment and be more room, but it'd be a little bit before we would have to utilize that. And I see in the future where that station is, is having another station out Black Hall area. Once that grows 20 years down the road, you'll start adding more, more stations, rather than larger stations, more smaller stations, just to get your response times down. It's more like the community policing, community public safety effect. You want the communities, they build up, and our traffic patterns and our, just infrastructure in general continues to grow, we'll need more dense coverage for dense areas.
And also, with that station being where it is in 75, I know a lot of times, I often see Station 8 on the interstate handling interstate stuff. They're always having to go closer to 138, which is still Henry County and more, in the state, Henry County and Clayton County borders. So that station is always busy, and I, you know, I'm just really concerned about those guys having a good residence.
It is a high-volume truck, engine and rescue company there, either two or three on our list, between 1, 9, and 8. They're definitely the three busiest stations in the county. And you're right, Commissioner, they do cover a lot of interstate. They were there this morning on the interstate on the way in. So that truck does cover the whole southbound and most of northbound from Jonesboro Road North, so it's very busy.
And one last thing, it has several schools at that station as well, and that station covers several districts. It goes all the way up to Monarch, Walt Stevens in District 5, District 4, where the Walmart is, Pates Creek Elementary School, all the way up to Dutch Town. Well, we have 15 now over on that side, but it goes down, Jodeco, Noah's Ark for District 2. So that station is a super important station, and I think we need to definitely pay attention to what's happening, and those guys are still in a trailer over there at that station.
Yes, ma'am.
Are there any other questions or comments from the board? Commissioner Wilson?
We all know that when we talk about a two-bay station, that's for four pieces of equipment, it could up to, and a three-bay could be up to six pieces of equipment. So for people that's not on board with how that works, I want to make sure our viewers know that, you know, we're not housing two pieces of equipment, we can house up to four or up to six. So I just want to make that clear.
Now, Commissioner Clemens, just that, you know, your approval we got from the board earlier, that land that was purchased up the street is a much better response area to come out of a fire station and not be traffic locked where Station 8 is now. So we're very excited about the potential and increasing or decreasing of response modeling coming out on to Jodeco Road and going east and west, rather than having to come out, wait for traffic at the Kroger, backed up at the red light. So we do appreciate the board approving that, with your guidance a few months ago to get that land already purchased.
All right. Are there any other questions or comments from the board? Okay. Well, we thank you and appreciate those updates from Public Safety, Fleet Services, and Technology Services, and we appreciate all our departments. So thank you much. Okay. We will now move into our consent agenda, and the following items are considered. We have three from the Building and Plan Review regarding creation of streetlights. The first one is in District 3 regarding a resolution approving the creation of a new streetlight district for Stanford Park subdivision on Airline Road. The second one is in District 1 regarding a resolution approving the creation of a new streetlight district for Sandy Ridge Phase 3 subdivision on Helena Place. And the third creation of streetlight district is in District 4, and it's a resolution approving the creation of a new streetlight district for Elliott Grove subdivision on Kellytown Road. We do have one additional consent agenda item from Animal Care and Control. It is a resolution accepting a donation in the amount of $2,000 from Martha and Ruby Charitable Foundation for the Prevention of Cruelty to Animals. Are any of these items requested to be removed from the agenda for further discussion? Here in non, the floor is now open for a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Submove it.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? The consent agenda was unanimously approved. We're now invite Ms. Lynn Placon to discuss the SPOLS regarding Fire Station Number 16 in memory of Henry County District 4 Commissioner Reed Bowman.
Good morning, Chair Wood, Commissioners. It is my honor to...
It is my honor to present a resolution dedicating Fire Station Number 16 in the memory of Henry County Commissioner Reed Bowman. In November of 2013, the voters of Henry County approved the SPOLS 4 referendum, which included funds for the new Fire Station Number 16 in District 4. Fire Station Number 16 was completed and opened to serve the citizens of Kellytown Community in July of 2018. Commissioner Reed Bowman was instrumental in the creation and implementation of several quality-of-life and public safety initiatives, including the building of Fire Station Number 16 in the Kellytown Community. Commissioner Blake Prince has requested to dedicate Fire Station Number 16 in memory of Commissioner Reed Bowman, who served faithfully as the District 4 Commissioner from 2007 to 2014. Commissioner, would you like to?
So much, the families here, and I appreciate you guys coming out. Do want to say a little something, then we'll go on back with it. Life is a speck in the fabric of time. It comes and goes so quickly. It is our responsibility as a community to remember and recognize the efforts and accomplishments of the community leaders that come before us. It warms my heart to know that those who come behind us will always remember the accomplishments of Reed Bowman. Reed loved his community and loved the Kellytown area. It would, it is my honor and privilege to dedicate Fire Station 16 to the memory of Reed Bowman. Now, on a personal note, when you run against somebody in the political scene, it, it's very difficult to be friends with that person after the fact. And a testament to Reed's Christian background, after the election, Reed let bygones be bygones. And anytime I called Reed, he answered the phone, and believe it or not, he always had the answer. Everything I asked him, he knew what was going on, he knew how we got here, he knew how we, best way to proceed. So, I leaned on Reed a little bit after I got in office for quite a while, actually, and still called him, asking questions on how things got to where they were, and he always answered the phone, was always very professional, and I really had a lot of respect for Reed. We'll be having a ribbon cutting at the fire station, and you'll have to keep up to date. Do we have a date on, on that, when that's going to happen?
We do not have a date yet, no.
Okay. What we'll be doing, we're going to create a plaque to Commissioner Reed Bowman, and it's going to just go over some of his accomplishments in life and who he was and what he did. And it's wonderful to think in 50 years, people will still remember Reed. It'll be long after we're gone that people will still go to that fire station and still remember who and what he did. And that, that's saying something. That's really saying something, because all we have is the memory, and all we, all we can do is remember. So, with that, I'll turn it back over to you. Thank you so much. Reed was a very special individual, a great man, a good Christian, and you should be very proud of what he did for this community.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Holmes has a comment, and I would like to make a comment as well. Commissioner Holmes?
First of all, I just want to say, I'm honored to have worked with Reed, and I'm honored to call him a friend and, and a tremendous resource for me. Everything I know about being a commissioner, I learned from Reed Bowman. There were times we had, you know, our, our little problems with each other, but, you know, we left it right here at this dais, and, you know, when the meeting was over, we were back friends. But he was somebody that I tremendously respected, somebody that was a family man. He loved his family, loved his kids, and he was a great competitor. And I think that's the reason why I have so much admiration for him, because, you know, he competed, but once the game was over, he could put all the, everything aside and, and hug you and maybe even kiss you. But I miss Reed, and he is tremendous, tremendous human, human being. And again, I'm fortunate to have the opportunity to work with him.
Commissioner Barton has a comment?
Yeah, I want to say to the Reed family, we really appreciate you all sharing Reed with us, the time that we had, and he was a great commissioner. He was a leader, and it was an honor for me to serve with him. And like Commissioner Holmes said, we always didn't agree on everything, but at the end of the day, we, we respected each other's decision, and we moved forward. And even after Reed left office, there was a lot of times that I would call on Reed for guidance on a lot of things, and he always gave me valuable information, and, and we appreciate him so well. Thank you.
Thank you. When I first met Commissioner Reed, I was actually working for Georgia Power, but I also live in his district. And I just remember Commissioner Reed Bowman representing and talking to all of his constituents. It wasn't as though he would pick and choose who he would listen to or where he would go. I would just admire him for that. I remember when he was going through some very difficult times, and he would sit in that seat down there, and I know he was not feeling well, and I could see him on the TV. I could be out here as his constituent, just seeing him press through and again, serving this community. I remember about a week before he passed, I called him because he just, we were sitting with a group of people, and we were like, well, how's Commissioner Bowman doing? And we just called him up and just say, we just want to say thank you. And it was interesting that even at that time, he says, he says, I just want you all to pray for me, and he went straight on into business. You know, this is what I'd like you to do, this is what I want you to think about, and I didn't realize that that would be my last moment to speak with him. But I will tell you, I was so touched by the testimonies at his home-going celebration, his celebration of life. And the thing that still resonates in my heart and in my mind, even as I sit here as an elected official, is that he was a great role model. But someone, and this was from one of his youth ministers at his church, and he said that Reed mastered the art of forgiveness. And that has stuck with me so, in so many different ways. And so, I say to the family, we just thank you again for sharing, and yes, it was good to see all of the family photos and how he, even in the midst of serving this community, he obviously put his family as a priority as well, and that too, has been an inspiration for me to definitely follow such a great role model. So, again, we are just honored to honor Commissioner Reed Bowman. Thank you. So, at this time, we obviously are going to ask, open the floor for a motion for this resolution.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion, a heartfelt motion, to dedicate Fire Station 16 to the memory of Commissioner Reed Bowman.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Are there other further comments or comments? All in favor? Any opposed? We graciously and unanimously agree. So, at this time, yes?
That's exactly what I was going to move into. That's okay, but thank you for the reminder. So, we do ask that the family would please join the board here for a photo, and thank you for being here as well.
We will now move into our next item from the county manager regarding the dedication of a portion of Peaksville Road as an honorary to JW Lemon Memorial Highway.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners, again. We're here again this morning to ask for, for approval of dedication, dedicating a portion of Peaksville Road in Locust Grove to the Lemon family. Mr. JW Lemon was a, I guess, you could put a, a changer in our community many years ago. We'll have more on him in just a few minutes. But we've been working with NAACP, community council members from Locust Grove, the mayor, and our county team on finding a way to recognize that, and it's come up to a, a point of making Peaksville Road, or memorializing him through markers on Peaksville Road. Locust Grove last week did approve their portion of the city limits, and the goal is to put a marker sign at Peaksville Road at the beginning in the city and at South Ola Road in the county to recognize Mr. Lemon as that being in honor of him moving forward. And we have a resolution that discusses Mr. Lemon and some of his accomplishments that Melissa will read. If it's good to read.
Okay, well, thank you. Well, we've heard the presentation. Are there any comments or questions from the board?
Okay. If it's okay, Madam Chair, we'll read the resolution that discusses more, then we'll have more discussion.
Okay, thank you, I'm sorry.
Okay. Good morning again, Chair and Board Members. This is a resolution of the Henry County Board of Commissioners to dedicate and install a marker on a portion of Peaksville Road in honor of JW Lemon. Whereas the Henry County Board of Commissioners, in cooperation with the City of Locust Grove, wishes to dedicate and install a marker on a portion of Peaksville, Peaksville Road between the intersection of said road with State Route Highway 42 to the intersection of South Ola Road in Locust Grove honoring James W. Lemon with the marker to read JW Lemon Memorial Highway. And whereas the board, after giving thorough consideration to all implications involved, has determined that this honorary designation would be advantageous and would benefit the citizens of Henry County by recognizing the important contributions of Mr. Lemon. And whereas Mr. Lemon was an integral part of improving the lives of African-Americans in and around Henry County through his activism and actions, particularly from establishing, establishing the Henry County chapter of the NAACP in 1943, dedicating his life to the education and betterment of those who were systematically underserved. And whereas Mr. Lemon was a civil rights pioneer and actively advocated for an improved education system and successfully achieved the group's goal of better training for teachers in African-American schools, and fighting for the rights of African-American farmers, helping them purchase land through the Federal Home Loans Association. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Henry County Board of Commissioners approves and adopts the dedication of a portion of Peaksville Road as honorary, as the honorary JW Lemon Memorial Highway through the installation of a roadway marker.
And Madam Chair, the intent, if approved and the pleasure of the board today, is first to install these markers, have a, a gathering with Locust Grove planned at a future date, so we can actually install the markers, have the family in, and do a better dedication, together with the City of Locust Grove today, is just to memorialize that, and, and it's the board's pleasure to have the board approve us moving forward with this, this process.
Thank you. We appreciate that. And Commissioner Wilson, I saw you make a motion, I'd like to make some comments as well. Go ahead.
Okay, I'll comment first. You will make a motion, then we're coming afterwards.
It doesn't matter.
So, I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Are there comments or questions? Yes, Commissioner Wilson?
I, I was not fortunate enough to know Mr. JW Lemon, but I've been in conversation with several people in the Locust Grove area. And last week, Mr. Willie Taylor and I were speaking, and, and he said a couple of things that stuck with me. He said, Mr. Lemon was a peacemaker of Locust Grove. He was a Martin Luther King before Martin Luther King was recognized of Locust Grove. And Mr. Taylor, thank you for that, and that always stick with me, sir. Thank you for sharing.
All right, thank you. Are there other comments? I would like to just say that we definitely honor Mr. Lemon. Apparently, he's a pioneer, especially establishing the first chapter of the Henry County NAACP. I want to say thank you to the NAACP for at least helping us to identify more historians here, I mean, those that have made history, helping to establish markers so that we can continue to understand more about the absolute history that we have right here in our own county. And do want to say thank you for the partnership that we witnessed in working with the City of Locust Grove. So, we commend you, Brad, and the mayor, and Tim Young there in the City of Locust Grove, and Councilman Taylor as well, for the conversations to get us this far. We're going to continue to look for opportunities to identify wonderful history opportunities that our citizens, especially our children, need to, to recognize. So, again, we appreciate that.
You're welcome, Madam Chair. And also, as for family members here, I'll thank the two sons who want to speak today. Wait till the dedication's certain. I just want to recognize the family members that, that shared their family with us, and just thank you for being here also today.
Okay. We're going to have Commissioner Clemens make her comments, and of course, we'd like the Lemon family to, to, to join us after we pass the, the resolution.
And I would just like to say, beyond Henry County, the Lemons family and Mr. Lemon goes further north. I've known him for years. I grew up in Mathlamah AME Church, and when we saw the Lemons coming, they were there at the worst times of our lives, taking care of the families during bereavement times, and they just have been around a long time. So, I know he has family members here, all the way from California, the first African-American female mayor there, so the extension of history in that family is deep, and just want to thank you all for being here as well.
All right. Are there other comments from the board? We've heard a first, a motion and a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, we graciously passed this resolution, and we're just, do ask the, Mr. JW Lemon's family to please join us, please, for a picture. JW Lemon family and also the NAACP for being here today. Okay, we will now move into our next item from EMA 911, and we're asking Mr. Don Ash to come and present a resolution regarding the purchase of a Pro QA medical software for the, for public safety.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. As a part of the system-wide Tyler technology project, the medical Pro QA project is implemented as part of our 911 to deliver advanced as part of our 911 to deliver advanced medical information and advanced medical instructions to 911 callers that call for a medical emergency. This platform allows us to integrate it into the Tyler solution that also enhances our ability to work with our fire and EMS resources to dispatch the closest and the most appropriate unit. The cost of this project is $176,670, and we will be paying for it directly out of E911 fees.
Okay. Well, we've heard the presentation. Are there any questions or comments from the Board? Commissioner Prince?
Always me.
Yes.
Explain to me the part of this, because we just seem to keep tacking on some stuff, so I'm getting a little concerned. Is this the CAD part?
So, Commissioner Prince, currently when we do medical dispatch, we use handheld cards that the operators have to ask the questions and input the data. This system moves the medical, same cards we use, but it makes it into a digital format and populates the CAD. So as the operator's entering the information, it populates it, and also helps us identify the type of response we're going to send.
Okay. When we talk about the CAD system, is there going to be something in the apparatus and buses that actually have the display on there? What are we doing as far as getting the information from 911 to the responders?
So, this is a separate application, but in the overall Tyler project, they do have the mobile data capabilities where information will be pushed directly from our site to the field units as a part of the project as well. This actually just deals directly with the medical cards.
Okay.
Commissioner Prince, also, as Director Ash said, this also would allow us to use national standards to determine which code these units respond. If it's a non-emergency, instead of going emergency everything, this is a national-recognized program that would allow us, through a systematic approach, to say, "Don't use your lights and sirens," which makes our citizens safer and our responders safer by not doing the lights and sirens and everything. It's more of a approved national standard through a medical direction. This is definitely be worthwhile. It is an add-on to our CAD that was not available when we had our CAD process went through before with Tyler.
Okay. All right, well, it sounds like, I understand it, so.
Yeah.
Are there any other questions or comments from the Board?
I have a question.
Okay, Commissioner Clemmons.
What's the implementation support package?
So, the implementation support package, it is the processes that we have to do, the medical Q and A, medical quality assessment, quality assurance, as well as the training and the implementation to make sure, because as you work on the medical Pro QA, you're working on the license of a physician in the program, so they ensure that you make sure we're following all the steps, so there's no liabilities to the county.
So is that ongoing?
It is ongoing. I'm sorry, that is just for the implementation, and that's just for the implementation. That won't be a recurring charge, that quality assurance.
What's the reoccurring charge for this?
So the reoccurring charge would be, once we purchase the system, we would only pay for any updates. Traditionally, like for the card system we use now, we have maybe a $200 upgrade when they have update the cards, but once we purchase a system, we won't have a recurring cost that exceeds this amount.
Just the update.
That's correct.
Okay. Are there any other questions from the Board? Here are none. The floor is now open for a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion and a second. Other comments or discussion?
One more question, Don. The license renewal and service support is $26,000. How often do we have to renew that license?
You will renew the license, I believe it will be the annual, I believe it will be an annual license renewal just for the license to be covered under Dr. Clausen and medical Pro QA.
Do we know what that is? Do we know what that amount is annually?
It should be the $26,000 would be the recurring cost, just for the licensing, because in order to use medical, any medical dispatch, you have to be licensed under.
Have we had a cost like this before? That we had, is this an additional $26,000 annually that we'll be adding? And I'm not saying that we don't need to, I just want to.
Yeah, we've never had anything like this. We're using paper cards.
Right, right.
And this will be a cost that, because we do have the Tyler, a more modern system to send the information to the trucks, this will be a medical directive, guidance for our dispatcher to start medical treatment before the ambulances or first responders get there. So there will be an additional cost yearly that will come out of our 911 fee money from our cell phones and house phones.
And this is the cost that we pay for upgrading technology?
Yeah, oh yeah.
And we have to, we have to get there, so I just wanted to be clear that.
It's unheard of, a community our size and the number of calls we're responding to, as we showed you earlier, to still use paper flip cards for our emergency responders.
And we're still far behind, so there's going to be much more that's going to have to come to this Board to continue this type of, so I commend you guys for this.
If we want to be proactive on our community support and public safety, we will have to do some upgrades.
Yep, yep. So this is additional.
Commissioner Prince?
Yes, sir.
One question.
Absolutely.
I know with the police, we're using the body computers to track their location with CAD. What are we doing in the apparatus and emergency vehicles?
So, a part of the Tyler, and the manager, I have to back me up, but as a part of the Tyler package, I believe we have AVL included in the system. Currently, our EMS units have AVL equipment as well.
That is correct, Commissioner. Our ambulances are equipped with AVL mobile data, so we can transmit EKGs to the hospitals and various information. On our equipment moving forward, once this total implementation of the New World Tower system, we'll move to a AVL dispatch system. So instead of each having a static district where this district for Station 8, as we used earlier with Commissioner Clemmons in our discussion, Station 8 being at Flippin' at Jobco, and there's, everything's modeled after that truck being sitting in the station, so everything's static. We'll move to AVL where if Engine 9 is coming back from another call, but they're closer, it'll automatically pick up that location of Engine 9 on the map and send the closest unit. They could be coming back from the fleet shop and have a call happen at here at 2081 at Industrial. If that truck's closer, the computer's going to pop that location and send the closest unit through the AVL system, you're talking about the locators.
How do the AVLs work? And I'm sorry to.
They'll work off air cards, and they'll come through the process. That's part of our project's total. We're about 70% there now. There'll be some, we do not have computers in all of our units, our EMS units, our fire units will move that way. It'll also have an instance where we'll be able to, if we're moving to a commercial fire somewhere, you could pull a pre-plan up and route and give you the hazards of everything en route. You also get the dispatch information, all the hazards from dispatch pop up on your screen and give you routing and best ways to get there. Even to the point, if we have a road closure like we have at Lake Dow or Lequon Mill, the CAD will automatically populate that and give better routing for our first responder units, all of these ones, to have a better access to get there quicker.
Okay. All right. Commissioner Clemmons, also, I would tell you that you're correct, as technology's advances, we are already looking at next-generation 911 technologies to incorporate those in our system as well as we move forward.
Okay. Very good questions. Other comments or questions? Here are none. The floor is now open for a motion.
Move to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Further discussions? All in favor? Any opposed? The motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now move into our next resolution from Facilities Maintenance. We invite Mr. Hutch Purvis up to discuss the resolution awarding the annual contract for fire protection equipment inspections and maintenance services for various departments and buildings.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Board members.
Good morning.
The Purchaseom Department solicited proposals, RFP 19-04, for an annual contract for fire protection system services for various county buildings. Two proposals were received, evaluated, and scored by the Evaluation Committee. Patriot Fire Protection Incorporated out of Locust Grove, Georgia, received the high score and is recommended for award for a one-year contract with two mutually agreed-upon annual extensions. This is a unit-priced contract with no fixed quantities. The county may add or remove units, locations as required, and the cost shall be negotiated in accordance with the cost proposal prices. Funds are available in various departments' budgets for this service. Questions?
Okay, we've heard the presentation, and if there are questions, please speak up, because we could barely hear you in the microphone.
I'm sorry.
It's okay. So are there any questions from the Board? Okay, I see Commissioner Prince is.
Question I have.
Yes, sir.
As part of our job as Commissioners is to guard the line financially, inspections. Explain to me why our Henry County Fire Department cannot do the inspections on Henry County buildings? And I understand when we're talking about recharging fire extinguisher, et cetera, that we probably don't have that capability, although we may.
Right.
We have qualified inspectors, we have, I know we have a bunch of new inspectors, I know we have a bunch of fire personnel that do the inspections, they come to my office once a year.
Right.
Why are we hiring another company to come in to do something that I feel we should be able to do ourselves?
Well, they do the inspections and the testing of the fire extinguishers and recharging. They also come out and inspect all our sprinkler systems, pressure test them, go through all the alarm panels and check those out as well to make sure that they're functioning correctly.
The sprinkler systems, I understand, alarm panels, I'm just questioning the fire extinguishers. I mean, on a fire extinguisher, there's a gauge, and it just, if it's in the green, it should be okay.
Right.
And you've got the date on your fire extinguisher, I just don't know. Again, we have people here in the county that do this exact thing.
Yes, sir. We've had this contract, been doing this for a while now, and I mean, I don't, I can't answer why we don't utilize our fire department to do different things, I guess, that's within the contract.
What we're looking to, Commissioner, never been proposed that way, but we do, as Hutch says, and I think you just, you comment, you understand that, the testing of the sprinkler systems, we get, you know, they look for the letter, but as for checking just dates and compliance on it, we'll break out the contract and see what that portion is, but I think through either fire or even risk, if we're about to start doing risk assessments in all facilities and have risk pockets of clean our clusters, that might be something to look at, just for checking that part. But for, as you guys alluded to, the sprinkler systems and the recharging and the hydrostatic testing and stuff like that, definitely has to be part of the contract.
Well, I did notice in the contract, I believe you can add or subtract anything from that.
Correct.
Let's just, what I don't want to do is spend county tax dollars on doing the same thing, and we have firefighters that literally come to our office once a year, check my fire extinguishers, look at the dates on them.
Okay.
If they're out of date, but to send somebody out to check on a fire extinguisher and pay whatever, 375, whatever it was, let's just make sure we're spending.
That's right. That's right. We'll go back and look at that, and you said we could add and subtract as needed, and we can subtract that if that's a feasibility. If they're coming in and there's no charge for them to check them, I'm not sure what that part of the contract, if there's no charge to check, and they're coming to do hydrotesting or something at one time, but we'll work at, we'll make sure we're not double, we're not doing something we can do internally.
Yeah, I'm just pointing out, the reason I ask this, because in this contract is Fire Station 16. I'm pretty sure that a firefighter can walk over to the fire extinguisher and see if the fire extinguisher's, I would hope, anyway. So, just something to think about in the future.
Yes, sir. Got it.
Okay, are there any other questions or comments from the Board? Okay, here are none. The floor is open for a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussions? Here are none. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries, six to zero. I was checking your motion, okay. I was looking at Commissioner Clemmons, I wanted to clarify your motion. Okay, are you?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, okay. So unanimous approval?
We need to agree.
Okay, yeah, we can, because I just wanted to make sure your hands were raised.
I was still anxious, still, I don't have time.
Okay, so.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussions or comments, anything you need, Commissioner Clemmons, because I'm, okay. So we have a motion and a second, no further, okay? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, unanimous approval, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, well, we'll now move into the next agenda item from our Henry County Police Department. We invite Major Rosen up regarding a resolution to approve two video security systems for the Village Park located off of Fairview Road.
Good morning, Madam Chair, ladies and gentlemen of the Board. I come before you today on behalf of the Police Department to seek approval to purchase equipment for two video security systems with a total of 12 cameras for the Village Park located at 750 East Fairview Road in Ellenwood. The Henry County Police Department has responded to multiple incidents at this location since June of 2018. The purchase of camera systems will increase the ability of the Police Department to identify subjects as well as protect county assets. AT&amp;T FirstNet Nighthawk LTE Mobile Hotspots will be ordered to enable remote access to the security system. The initial cost of the security system is $2,757.04, with a recurring cost of $80 a month for the AT&amp;T service, bringing the total for a 12-month service to $960. A contract will be necessary for the monthly service of the system. The system will allow for remote smartphone or computer access. There will be optional text and push notifications for motion alarms, power outage, and low battery alerts on camera number eight. Spare parts will be ordered and included in the package for easy in-house support and troubleshooting. The system will also allow for expandability for additional cameras in the future. Upon receipt of the equipment, a request will be sent to the Henry County Building Maintenance Department for system installation. If approved, the Police Department seized assets fund account will be used to facilitate this project.
Okay, we've heard the presentation. Are there any questions or comments from the Board? Commissioner Holmes?
This park has been, it's done what I thought it was going to do, it's been very successful. Thousands of people visit this park on a weekly basis. This is a proactive measure to ensure that we keep people safe and that people feel safe when they, when they visit Village Park. So with that, I'll turn it over to you, Chair.
Okay. Thank you for those comments. Any further comments? Okay, the floor is now open for a motion.
So move.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second. Further discussions? All in favor? Any opposed? The motion carries with unanimous approval.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're now moving to our next item from Technology Services. Invite Mr. Skip Floyd up to discuss a resolution awarding the Managed Print Services Contract.
Good morning, Board.
Good morning.
Chair, Henry County's current Managed Print Services Contract is expiring this month. This agreement provides for all print, toner, and repair services for 500-plus laser printers throughout the county for a period of 48 months. Milner is a supplier on a U.S. Communities Managed Service Contract. The Purchasing Department, in concert with us, solicited a proposal for Milner for a new contract. The new contract essentially will do the same things it's doing now, but we actually got a lower price, a little bit lower price, and instead of 270,000 prints a month, we get 300,000 on the black and white, and instead of 20,000 color, we get 45,000 for a smaller price, and it includes 244 new devices during that contract time instead of 60 from the last. So a great improvement over our last contract, and basically, we just extended it out for another 48 months. Any questions?
Very good. We've heard the presentation. Are there any questions? Okay, here are none. The floor is now open for a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussions or questions? All in favor? Any opposed? The motion carries with unanimous approval. Thank you.
Ma'am.
Okay, we have another item from Technology Services, and this is a resolution approving the new SAN storage hardware, so if you'll give us that presentation, Mr. Floyd.
Yes, ma'am. With the existing SAN storage, basically our complete storage system coming to end-of-life from Hewlett-Packard, we must prepare for adequate backup disaster recovery capacity for our production and backup storage sites. This resolution will allow us to purchase the necessary storage for primary and backup using a Dell State contract and replace the end-of-life server at a cost of $439,365.88. And also purchase an existing backup Dell server we have and upgrade it at a cost of $55,734.72, both using State contract. This will provide adequate storage for our Commvault and disaster recovery at the same time. We're approximately a petabyte of storage in this county now with this purchase. So it'll give us offline storage for our complete backups at a disaster recovery site, and it does a bit-by-bit copy over the fiber. When data changes here, it moves that bit over to the disaster recovery site instantaneous. So this is, this is definitely needed, and at a total cost of $495,160.06, and the funds are available in our current budget.
Okay.
Any questions?
Thank you. We've heard the presentation. Yes.
This is also part of the, our overall plan that Skip and his team's developing for, what's the word, we have systems now where counties have been taken over through cyber attacks. This also is important to make sure we have our backup redundancy to move over and recover from that if and when, or when we are attempted. We do have several hundred attacks per month that can't get through, but if something did happen, like several counties around us, and if, that's been noticed in the last month, have been taken for ransom, this will be our backup also, and it's part of our fight against that cyber attacks in Henry County. Just want to throw that out there.
We could have a several-week discussion on cybersecurity right now. It's definitely. We could have a several-week discussion on cybersecurity right now. It's, it's definitely scary out there, but...
So how long would it take, if the resolution is approved, how long would it take to install this, and how soon will we get it?
This server would probably take us two months to, to get it fully implemented. We're moving 700 terabytes of data, which consists of virtual servers, docuWare storage, email storage. All of those servers have to be kept live. You bring up the new one, take down the old one, move it. We work lots of weekends and lots of nights, so we can keep this thing running. It runs the phone system, it does pretty much everything in the county, so it's a very, very important server.
All right, are there any other questions or comments from the board? Here are none, the floor is now open for a motion.
So move.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Further discussions or comments? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries with unanimous approval.
Thank you so much.
We're now moving to our SPOS section on item 15, and we invite Ms. Lynn up again to discuss a resolution approving the property acquisition in District 5.
Good morning, Chair, Commissioners. Before you, it's a resolution to authorize the acquisition of 6.46 acres, more or less, in Land Lot 197 of the 12th District in Henry County, Georgia. Whereas certain real property is needed and necessary for the construction of county facilities, and whereas 4.46 acres of land, more or less, in Land Lot 197 of the 12th District of Henry County have been identified as necessary for improvements so as to permit government operations thereon, and whereas negotiation to secure a contract for the above-described property has resulted in an offer from the seller, now therefore it be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Henry County, Georgia as follows. The Board of Commissioners hereby authorizes the acquisition of 6.46 acres of land, more or less, in Land Lot 197 of the 12th District of Henry County, as identified in Exhibit A attached hereto, and made a part herof pursuant to the terms of that certain purchase agreement attached hereto as Exhibit B. The Chair and County Manager and/or the County Attorney are authorized to execute the purchase agreement on behalf of the county and to execute and deliver such documents as are necessary to consummate the transaction contemplated therein. I'll be happy to answer any questions, if anybody has anything.
Okay, thank you for the presentation. Are there any questions from the board?
Here that the, these next two items are for the construction of a new police station as well as a new fire station that we will put in the next SPOS, and also potential new county services for the northern part, portion of, of the county.
Okay, well, thank you for those comments. Are there additional comments or questions, discussion? Here are none, the floor is now open for a motion.
So move.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Further discussions or questions or comments? All in favor? Any opposed? Are you, wait a minute, are you in favor or opposed? Okay, so all in favor, was it unanimous vote? Okay, thank you. Okay, it looks like there's some confusion, I'm gonna do this again. We had a motion and a second. All in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, thank you. Any opposed? None. It was unanimous approval. Thank you. Okay, so we thank you for the next presentation that you're gonna make as well, and it's regarding a resolution authorizing property acquisition in District 5.
Yes, whereas certain real property is needed and necessary for the construct, construction of county facilities, and whereas 13.14 acres of land, more or less, in Land Lot 197 of the 12th District of Henry County have been identified as necessary for improvements so as to permit government operations thereon, and whereas negotiation to secure a contract for the above-described property has resulted in an offer from the seller, now therefore it be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Henry County, Georgia as follows. The Board of Commissioners hereby authorizes the acquisition of 13.14 acres of land, more or less, in Land Lot 197 of the 12th District of Henry County, as identified in Exhibit A attached hereto and made part herof pursuant to the terms of that certain purchase agreement attached hereto as Exhibit B. And the Chair, the County Manager, and/or County Attorney are authorized to execute the purchase agreement on behalf of the county and to execute and deliver such documents as are necessary to consummate the transaction contemplated therein.
Future construction of a fire station, police station, and future county services for the northern portion of the county.
Okay, thank you for that comment. Any other comments or questions from the board? Here are none, the floor is now open for a motion.
So move.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any further questions or comments? All in favor? Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We're now moving to our next item from the County Manager regarding a resolution seeking an extension of the service delivery strategy agreement, and we're inviting our County Manager, Sherri Hobson Matthews, for that presentation.
Good morning, Chair and Board. You have a resolution before you this morning, seeking an extension of our service delivery strategy. As you all may or may not know, over the course of the last six to eight months, myself, our Deputy County Manager, and our four city administrators have gone through all of the services that are currently being provided, not only by the county, but as well by the city. We are still trying to cross some hurdles in terms of making sure that we do provide services to all of our residents, but also making sure that we aren't duplicating those services. And so this is just a resolution that we're asking the board to approve, to send to the Department of Community Affairs, asking for an extension. The City of Stockbridge has already approved their resolution, the City of Locust Grove approved their resolution, and now we're up next, and then the City of Hampton will finalize theirs on next week. This will in no way jeopardize any of our grant funding that we currently receive, but we certainly want to make sure that we have a good document and that we're able to present to you all what the services will look like and what the funding will look like. So again, this is just a resolution asking for an extension, and the extension shall, shall be no greater than 120 days. I'll be more than happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Okay, are there any questions from the board? Yes, Commissioner Prince.
Sherri, I'm a little confused. SDS agreements are individual in nature, meaning, you know, we have an SDS agreement with certain city for fire service. It's individual in nature. Explain this to me again, so that I can understand it. It, it sounds like we're just extending SDS agreement, but I don't see an SDS agreement for what?
So the SDS agreements that we currently have, the one that we're currently under is from 2009, and when we approved our service delivery strategy, it included all four cities. Now, for fire services, we do have individual agreements, like for the City of Stockbridge, we have a police service agreement. For fire services with the City of McDonough, we do have a memorandum of understanding with the City of McDonough. But these are the services, like your planning and zoning, your building, your road infrastructure, and what we've done in the past is the county and all four cities adopt together a service delivery strategy.
So we will be negotiating these, because there's been a few SDSs that I had some questions about that I'm not sure we're all on the same page with the cities of what we are doing, what we aren't doing. And one of the things, you know, with an SDS, I know that the City of Stockbridge is now doing their own plan review, and we probably have an SDS on the books to do their plan review, and I don't know if that's been changed. So are we working to change this, or are we working, because this has been going on a while?
Yes, sir, that is what the SDS will do. It will outline what services Henry County will provide for the unincorporated residents and for those residents that are within the city limits. So you take, for example, something like our animal control. Animal control services are provided countywide, and so that is one service that will have to determine what is the cost to the residents for us to provide those services. Now, in terms of the building permitting, as you are aware, our SDS did originally allow for Henry County to provide the building and plan review services for the City of Stockbridge. The city did notify the county that they were going to take on those additional responsibilities, and it's my understanding that we do have an agreement, or that they did send something over to the county, and the board did act on the City of Stockbridge taking those services over. I will tell you, we've been in a lot of conversation with the City of Hampton, and currently, the City of Hampton provides their services for building, stormwater, and all of their services, and there's been a lot of conversation in terms of the county taking a lot of those responsibilities back. So what we're at now is trying to figure out what that cost looks like. I think we talked about several months ago creating what we call special tax districts. And while it's not additional taxes, what it will do is clearly articulate what the cost will be for a resident for the county to provide that level of service. And so I'm hoping by us taking this additional time, in the past, we've used a methodology, and I'll be honest with you, it's a methodology that no one really understood. It was just a formula, and we're not sure where the formula or how the formula was initiated, and so that's what we're taking some additional time to bring in some professionals who really work in the field of setting up these special tax districts, and to make sure that, one, the county is getting their fair share in the cities as well. So I'm hoping that through this extension, we will be able to clearly bring to you all what the cost will be, so that when citizens ask, I live in unincorporated Henry County, or I live in the City of Hampton, and I feel like I'm not reaping the same benefits as a resident in the unincorporated area, we should be able to tell you all what that cost is for that resident.
I'm glad you brought up the, the pay structure and how we do it. When we were going through the SDS with the City of Stockbridge and the police department, I reviewed our current way that we weight, if you will, it's a weighted average, it's some way to take off this much of the tax bill and put this much of the tax bill. And it, you know, I have a degree in mathematics, and it is the most confusing system I've ever seen, and I don't really believe it's functional. If I was going to be here longer, I would definitely be pushing toward the special tax districts, and I mean, tax has become a dirty word up here, but special tax district will make sure that we represent a citizen who lives in Ola, that they are paying the same amount that a citizen who lives in downtown Stockbridge for the services that they receive. And so I, I just won't, I, I won't be here, but I just want to make sure the citizens keep an open mind to the special tax district, because it's, it's a mathematical formula that you can actually look at and understand. What we're doing now, I, I'll be honest with you, I can't even explain it. It, it's a prorated, I really don't understand it at all, and I really couldn't tell you how accurate it is in anything that we do. So I appreciate you bringing that up. Keep us up to date on this. Again, I won't be here, but I think it's very important with the SDS is to complement that with the special tax districts. I, I think that's where this county needs to go. That's where the other counties have been going, and it seems to be working out much better for them. So, I, I'm gonna vote to approve this. I don't like voting on just blanket things like this, but as we move forward, let, let's get this buttoned up and try to figure out some kind of formula that does work that we can... So when I get a question from a constituent in the City of Stockbridge that says, "We're, we're double paying for this", I can say, "Well, here's where you paid for it, here's where you didn't, and here's where it come on". I can't explain it now. I hardly understand it. So, I appreciate you bringing that up. I, I will support this, but keep, let's keep moving, and I, I do think this board in the future needs to have communications about special tax districts for services provided. And, and with this may even come in a fire tax, and I know tax is a dirty word, but a fire tax, you know, that just pays for the fire service, police tax, public safety tax, things that just cut up that section, so the citizens know where their money's going, that they know, you know, 75% of the budget goes toward public safety or whatever part. But this is just part and parcel of it, but please keep us up to date. I don't really like voting on blanket things like this, but I know it must be done.
And, and I do want to, just for clarification, this is just to allow us some additional time to work out what those special, special tax districts will look like. This will come back before the board for a full action, where you all will receive a map that delineates which special tax districts are going to be created, what that amount is gonna be, and you all will be able to determine what services we will agree to provide to the respective cities. So we'll come back to the board for action.
Commissioner Clemens, and then welcome to Commissioner Barr.
I, I do agree with Commissioner Prince that there needs to be a better mechanism in place when it comes to our SDS, but I'm also very disappointed that we're having to ask for an extension, because I think this needs to be a priority of staff to get this done. I know, Sherri, you've been talking about redoing this for two years now, and I don't know what's happening. I don't know where, if the cities are not agreeing, if you can't reach them, if the meetings are not going, I don't know what's happening. But this needs to be a priority. We shouldn't have to be asking for an extension. The longer we wait and we stay in those old agreements, the more money it costs us, and, and we're, we're not moving forward. So please, please, make this a priority. What would be the deadline now, if, after this extension, 2019, February 20? That's not far away. We've got holidays coming up. So whatever else is going on, we need to make sure that every other department is handling their stuff, so that you can really concentrate and make this a priority. I, I'm just really disappointed we're having to extend it. I mean, we have to, but make sure we make it a priority to get this stuff in place.
Understood, and certainly I want to respond to that in terms of why the extension is being requested. The special tax districts is something very new to us at the county level and at the city level, and we've had a lot of change in leadership, not only at the county level, but at the city level as well, and we want to make sure that we afford our new incoming managers an opportunity to get brought up to speed. I mentioned that the City of Hampton currently provides all their services, and in a meeting a couple of weeks ago, the manager mentioned, "Look, I'm, I'm in a position that I need some assistance from the county", and so it's not a matter of just saying, "Hey, we're going to start on next Monday providing building and plan review services", and so when we start talking about those special tax districts, when we start adding a level of service beyond our unincorporated area, we've got to evaluate, do we have enough staff members in place to make sure things are done? So please know that it's not a matter of us not getting things done. When you're sitting at the table and you have four cities with four unique situations in terms of what they want, we are really, really working hard to try to make sure that we're accommodating all requests. I, I don't think it's any secret to anyone, police services is gonna be a very interesting conversation with the City of Stockbridge. Our fire services has been a very interesting conversation with the City of McDonough, and so we have some, some unique situations. Believe it or not, Parks and Rec has been many, many weeks of conversations in terms of making sure that all of our residents are receiving the same level of service. I don't know if the board knows it or not, but we have parks that are located within our city limits in which we are providing services for. The current service delivery strategy delineates that if there is a park, and although it's located in the city limits, if there is a capital expenditure, the county pays 70% of that expense. And that's a concern for me as the county manager, because these aren't parks that we're responsible for. If there's an activity in that park, the cities have full control over what happens. And so I will tell you, one of the things that we're looking at is revamping the entire Parks and Rec and how the agreements work. And so that is something that will certainly be coming back to the board. But I assure you, this is a priority, not only for the manager's office, but for the city managers as well.
But Sherri, I trust that you and Brad have the skill set to know what it needs to be. So maybe you all need to go ahead and say, "This is what it needs to be", and go to the cities, because they don't know. And, and instead of having to go back and forth, you present to them what we need to look like as a county, and then you start the negotiations from there and set some deadlines. February 2019 is coming, and it's coming quick. So I just would suggest that you guys use, use the talents that you have. You guys know what to do. Just go ahead and put something out there, and then start the negotiations.
Understood. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Barrman, I think you had a comment, and then Commissioner Wilson.
Yes, Ms. Matthews, and you pretty much answered some of the questions I had, but I would like to see in about 60 days, we have a workshop or something to kind of bring us up to date on where we are, so we can have more detailed question and answer. And one question, I, I'm curious, if Eagles Landing becomes a city, how, how they gonna play into this? Will they be, will we have to start this process all over again, or how's that work?
Well, obviously, if the City of Eagles Landing becomes a city, you will have to create a special tax district for that group, and I always try to defer to Patrick, because I don't want to muddy it, but it is my understanding, if the City of Eagles Landing becomes a city, for up to two years, the county will provide the level of service to the residents of that city. And so there will be a separate agreement with the county and the new City of Eagles Landing that we will have to negotiate. But I will tell you, I want the board to understand that the extension has nothing to do with that. We are moving forward with or without there being that city, or the city conversation, but there will have to be an agreement between the county and the city, and that will, again, be something that we'll have to bring before the board. And that would be for any and all services that they may seek to have the county provide. And I don't know, Patrick, if I've muddied that at all.
No, Sherri's correct. For the, for, under the, the law that creates the City of Eagles Landing, if it's approved, for the first two years, the, the county will provide... two years, the county will provide all services to the city that the city doesn't want to provide for themselves. We'll collect taxes just like we collect today, and we'll provide whatever service on the same basis we provide in the county, we'll provide in that area. During those two years, we will have to start a conversation about a permanent agreement with them as well, if it's approved. So, but for the first two years, we don't necessarily need an agreement, because the law already tells us what to do.
All right. Hold on a minute. Okay, so, okay, go ahead, Commissioner Wilson.
Sherri, what? Can't come up with agreement February twenty eighth?
Well, let me say this. The managers and I have all committed that we will have this completed in sixty days. The holdup, honestly, is we need to get someone to verify that the numbers in terms of what the special tax districts are, or the special tax districts that will be created, that that number is a fair and equitable number. And so I'm confident that within the next sixty days, and I will tell you, that's one of the things, when we talked about the extension with the managers, if we needed to just put sixty days. The Department of Community Affairs allows up to a hundred and twenty days, and what we didn't want to happen is we get to day fifty-five, and we needed five more additional days and have to come back before the Board. So we asked for the maximum, but it's my understanding, our Deputy County Manager and our city managers, that this is a priority and that within the next sixty days, we will have this back to the Board. There is no room for it not to happen. We don't have that option, because what happens is if we don't adopt it within the hundred and twenty day extension, then we begin to jeopardize our state funds or grant funds that may be out there. And I think I heard loud and clear from the Commissioners that that can't happen, and certainly that is not the track we're headed on.
In sixty days, I guess we'll know if we're going to be extended to the February twenty eighth.
That is correct. But again, we meet with our managers every Wednesday morning to go through the service delivery strategy. I will tell you, when we start talking about the levels of service, it's a book, and it's probably about sixty tabs, and it outlines every service. And a lot of it is, we as managers agree, but we also realize that we have to have our elected officials to vote on what that final decision's going to be. And so right now, what we've been struggling with is literally the equability of making sure that when those special tax districts are created, what impact it will have on the county and on the city residents.
Okay. Commissioner Clemmons had another comment.
This is about your question, Commissioner Barron. And Patrick, please correct me if I misstate this, but the services that we will offer to the City of Eagles Landing are basically the services that we're already offering those residents that are in the unincorporated area anyway. So there's not like new services, except we will get the business license that we used to have, that Stockbridge was not getting, those people that were in the county. That money will come back to the county if we're doing the business license services now. So it's kind of, you know, we're already providing that unincorporated area services anyway, so we'll just continue for two years, and then they'll start taking over.
The law says we provide the exact same services in that area that we apply to the unincorporated. We don't, we're not required to provide a single extra service that we don't already provide.
I just wanted to clarify that, because sometimes people may think, "Oh, now it's going to be new services that the county has to take on because of this," and that's, I want to make sure that was clear.
My comments are, I'm glad that we're going back and simplifying this whole process on how citizens will be assessed for the services that they have. So I'm really glad to hear that. So I too am in support of special tax districts as well. The second thing is, I knew our original deadline was October thirty-first. I'm glad we're not right here at the last meeting in October trying to ask for an extension. So that's good. The third thing, I agree that the sooner we can get this resolved, the better, because there are no service delivery strategy discussions or trying and testing. But I'm glad that we're redoing everything, looking at everything, and making sure that, again, that our citizens are not being taxed, double taxed, you know, for services, but more importantly, that it's being allocated in the proper manner, in a simple way that they can understand. So those are my comments on that. Are there any other comments? Hearing none, the floor is now open for a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any other further discussion or comments? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries unanimously.
Thank you all.
Okay, thank you. We're now moving to our public comment section for the day, and we welcome citizens who want to voice their county-related concerns and opinions that are not listed on the agenda to be allocated five minutes. We do ask that if those that want to speak, that they do sign up with our county clerk prior to the meeting. And so I look now to our county clerk. Are there any public comments that we...
We have two signed up today, Josh Milam and Larry Morrie.
Okay. So we ask our first speaker to please come forward. Please state your name and address, so that we will allocate you the five minutes. Either way, he's fine.
My name's Josh Milam. Milam's Tree Service here in the county.
Yes, sir.
Last Tuesday, one of my employees flipped one of my trucks over. And Henry County called wrecker one to come turn it back up on its wheels. They was there an hour. They charged me eighty-one-hundred and twenty dollars. That had nothing to do with me. They settled for five thousand. But in the bill, they charged me fifteen dollars a mile. They said that they used five bags of oil dry, they used two. I was there. He got his blower out and blew his... I had five employees there blowing the road off. He charged me fifty dollars because he got his blower out. I just don't think they're treating the community very good. That's all I wanted to say.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Your comments are noted. Thank you. We now invite our next speaker to come public comments.
Larry Morrie with Ethics in Government. Couple of years ago, I brought a situation to the county in the code enforcement area. And a, the head person in that department was, I think he retired, and so I kind of just, you know, let everything else kind of go for a while, see if everything was straightened out. But, you know, when one person can have nine wrecks in a department, nine wrecks, and it goes back multiple years under multiple administration, and she don't get fired, somebody is protecting her, and I just can't imagine that, how somebody could have eight wrecks and just nine wrecks. Matter of fact, she ran over one of the employees in that department and put him in a hospital, and now he's on temporary or permanent disability. And we just keep letting it go. The second thing is, when we were talking this afternoon about the, this morning about the fire trucks and police and all the calls, I think I was correct in seeing where there was thirty-seven house fires and several thousand calls. A couple of months ago, I brought up the fact about running these fire trucks up and down the road going to wrecks. I would say a four-wheel-drive unit pickup truck, F-two-fifty, three-fifty, could be run up and down the road for accidents at about a seventh of the cost. You're going to keep on, you're going to have a bunch of nice, pretty fire trucks that you're going to be going to wore out, because every accident I see, there's one to three chasing these accidents. Surely y'all can figure out a cheaper way to do that. And this is a federal offense, and I think y'all better be aware of it, because somebody is. Gravel was removed from the airport, taken to a private individual's property in the county, and I'm talking about several thousand dollars' worth of gravel. And that's moving, that's moving federal monies that was put to pay for that gravel and install it at the airport. And then that federal property goes back to a private individual without bids. And when one of the commissioners says something to that individual, he said, "You must not know who I am." Well, I'm going to say to that individual, "You must not know what you're doing, because somebody is going to answer for that federal gravel, just a matter of time." So we'll let y'all handle that. The last thing I want to talk about is, this police case has been the most amazing thing I've ever read. I know y'all have been talking about it a lot. I'm sure of that. And matter of fact, I was told one of y'all asked for it not to be made public. But we ain't got no newspaper in the county to report nothing, so probably you think you're going to get away with that. But probably not. That's probably going to come out, too. And probably the last thing I'm going to say is this, I think I've got forty seconds. You know, we supposed to encourage people to come and speak up for the county about problems in the county, but y'all make it darn well impossible to do that. Because if I do that, then I got to take off and work, come up here and sit all day until y'all get through with these departmental things that most of you has already done before you got here. Most of it's already approved before you even come in here. But we go through this dog and pony show to do that, and you make somebody that wants to say something, wait till the very end, and then you give him three minutes, and then it better be according to what the queen up there wants, or she'll throw you out.
Thank you. Your comments are duly noted. So this concludes our public comments? Okay. Well, we're now moving to the next agenda item regarding the approval of our minutes for the September eighteenth Board of Commissioners meeting. Were there any revisions or comments regarding those minutes? Hearing none, the floor is now open for a motion for approval. Move to approve. We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussions? All in favor? Any opposed? The motion carries for the approval of the minutes. At this time, are there any comments by any of the Commissioners? Okay, Commissioner Clemmons.
Stockbridge is having a love walk October twentieth for breast cancer awareness, and we are leading a charge to bring out mothers and daughters against cancer. So anyone that knows mothers, daughters, aunts, uncles, dads, grandfathers, we want to see as many people out to support that cancer walk. It's October twentieth, and it's, we have a group of mothers and daughters against cancer that will be walking together.
Okay.
Y'all would just share that information.
All right, thank you. Any other comments from any of the Commissioners? Okay, we're now moving to the County Manager comments.
I have to come in here.
Okay. We're therefore moving to the notice of our upcoming meetings and events. On October the sixteenth at six-thirty P.M., there will be a regular Board of Commissioners meeting. And on the October twenty-third workshop meeting that was originally scheduled, that has been canceled. Regarding our SPOS five committee meetings, there will be one October the fourth at six-thirty P.M. at the Fairview Recreation Center in the Community Room at thirty-five Alston Road. And then on October the eighteenth at six-thirty P.M., there would be a SPOS five committee meeting with the City of Locust Grove at the Public Safety Building, located at thirty-six forty, Highway forty-two in Locust Grove. So at this time, I'll look to the County Attorney. Do we have anything for executive session today?
Nothing today.
Okay, we have nothing. So now we'll move to our final agenda item. We have for, open the floor for a motion to adjourn.
Move.
We have a motion?
Second.
And there's a second, all in favor? Any opposed? So adjourn. Have a good rest of the day.